Hi Linda.
Hi, how you doing?
Okay, you ready for Christmas?
Oh, as ready as I'm gonna be.
There we go.
It's all the same, every day in and day out.
Yeah, well, nobody's getting together, we're all in different houses and different places, so it's kind of a non-Christmas Christmas this year. Rejoice in the summer when we've all been vaccinated.
Sound up, I didn't, I gotta leave out here. I gotta go back in, I gotta turn the sound up.
Who's here? Hi Anne. Hi Robin.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, Matt?
I'm gonna, I need to turn up my sound, so I may be going out of here for a bit.
All right, do we have to haul up?
Yeah.
Okay, Robin, I've got the, the flag for you this week.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that, I missed, you know, the pledge.
So, we are recording right now.
Okay. Is it time to start? We don't have enough selectmen to start.
Just two of us, Robin.
I was gonna say, I only have two people.
We're shorthanded.
Everybody ready for tomorrow's big snowstorm?
Yeah.
Back again.
We don't see you.
I see Matt on here twice.
Oh yeah, okay, good, yes, it is, let's just do that. Does everyone have their home computer?
Yes.
Okay, good.
There he is.
So, yeah, I have, I, so that I could do a shared screen as a participant, I've got my desktop up and I also have the laptop up, too.
Okay. Aren't you a tech guru?
Oh, it's funny, I see different people in one view than I see in the other view.
Really? I don't see Linda anymore.
We've got sixteen participants.
Sixteen? Oh, I only have six, or the selectmen here?
I only have four.
We have, yeah, Josh, Josh is on now, and Mark is on, and Lou is on.
But we don't see all of them.
I don't see any of them.
I gotta scroll down, now I see them.
Scroll down?
Yeah, we're with a shared screen, we can, I see Josh and Mark, there we go.
Okay.
There he is, yeah.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Yeah, but they don't all come up in the shared screen, do they?
No, right, we're on Matt's shared screen, so it's gonna, when we go off the flag, you see everybody.
After we, I'll take that off as soon as we do the pledge.
Yeah, we'll have the Brady Bunch thing up.
Okay, so, I see. Mark, and Josh, and Daryl, and Lou, I think we're all, why don't we go ahead? I think it's time to get started, and others can join us as we go along. Matt has provided an American flag for us, so I would appreciate it if you would stand for the pledge, please. The pledge allegiance to the flag.
America, to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty. Justice for all.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Now we have it.
There we go, there's Lou, okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, let me see, we'll open the call, the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the minutes to the meeting for December 2nd. And I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I'll second, Robin.
Second.
Pardon me?
I didn't get the second.
Daryl.
Daryl.
Okay, thank you.
You know, any discussion? All in favor?
I abstain, I wasn't there for the whole meeting.
Okay, we missed you, how are you feeling?
Better, pretty much over.
Oh, good.
I was lucky.
Yeah, I'll say. Okay, so that passes with four, with Lou abstaining. I tell you what, I'm really breaking up this evening, so I don't know if it's because of the number of the people or my computer's just getting old and crotchety.
Yeah, mine's patchy, too.
Okay, payroll warrants number thirty-three and thirty-six, I think we can take those together this evening.
I make a motion, we accept the payroll warrants.
Any discussion? All in favor? Everybody, thank you. Accounts payable warrant, the first one is number thirty-four, which is the general warrant.
I'll move accounts payable warrant thirty-four.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'll just say, I mentioned to Matt that I was interested in the, the solar array and how that was coming along since it just started, and we did add that to the agenda, so we can talk about that. Because of, you know, the, the electric bill is on there, so any other discussion? All in favor?
It's thirty-four, the Hager one.
Uh, thirty-four is the general warrant.
Uh, no, it's, thirty-four is Hager.
Sorry, I'm sorry, well, I was doing number thirty-five then, so let's start with number thirty-five, because that's the one that I was addressing first.
Okay.
Okay. So any discussion on that one, the general?
No.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read the agenda wrong.
All right.
Okay. Uh, warrant number thirty-four, which is the Hager.
I'll move AP thirty-four.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. All right, Matt, I have an item here, the year-to-date revenues.
Yes. I don't know if you can see that on my screen, maybe not. Let's see, just a second here. Can you see, can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I just want to give you an update, a quick update on year-to-date revenues. Our real estate taxes are, are up about 0.5%, which is good over last year because we had budgeted a decrease there overall, and our excise tax is up eleven point two percent, and that's looking good because we had budgeted just an eight percent increase. Hard to say how things will go going forward, but that's where we stand today. Those are our two major revenue sources.
Matt, what was the real estate number again?
It's, it's right there, can you see it? I put it on share screen, yeah, it's, it's.
We have the email, we have the email.
Oh yeah, it's up about 0.5%.
0.5, okay.
Yeah, which is good, because we, we, but, we, we actually reduced the property taxes.
Yeah, yeah. We're just, we're looking at part, part of it here, I think.
So, okay. That's all I had, and then, unless there's any questions on that.
No, are they up because more people are paying tax, or what?
Well, no, people are just paying their taxes on time, so, and we did have some, you know, with some adjustments to the, to the, the taxes, you know, after the, after the commitment was done, so we're seeing a positive input increase, and people are paying on time, so, even earlier than last year. I'm not sure why that is, but we're a little bit ahead.
Great. Okay. We have a presentation this evening, an update on the Broadreach Shellfish Resources Sustainability Study. And I think we each received a PowerPoint presentation to review in advance.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so should I go ahead and start sharing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a sec here, I need to go into security.
It looks as though I might already have access.
Oh, you, you should, I, I put it in for the meeting ahead of time, so, yeah, you should, you should be able to do that. Let me just make sure.
Um, there we go.
Yes, you should.
Yeah.
Yep, there it is.
Okay. And just getting that all positioned, hold on one sec. It's tricky with, doing PowerPoint on Zoom is a little bit challenging sometimes, but, okay, um, well. Great, um, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Sarah Rizley, and I'm a University of Maine graduate research student based at the Darling Marine Center. Um, tonight, my lab mate Melissa Britch and I will be talking with you all about our most recent work with the town of Damascata to study shellfish populations through a local knowledge mapping study. Um, so for this evening, we'll start out by sharing updates on the progress being made to study shellfish populations in the Damascata River. We'll recap the work completed as part of the initial phase of the study back in 2019, and then introduce the current mapping work. We'll close out with some questions for you all about how this information might be useful for the town.
Thanks.
So, the history of the study dates back to 2019, when the Damascata-Newcastle Joint Shellfish Committee began a project in collaboration with the Darling Marine Center. And the project emerged from the committee's desire to develop current baselines for the wild shellfish resources, shellfish including softshell clams, cohogs, and oysters, and to understand past changes in the estuary. This information would then inform management of the wild shell fishery. Uh, the study included shellfish population surveys pictured here on the right, a recruitment experiment, and interviews with local harvesters. And overall, the study sought to address these three main questions shown on the slide here. So, one, to understand the current status of shellfish populations. Two, to learn more about young shellfish settling onto the clam flats called recruitment. And three, to explore how shellfish populations have changed over time. So, the 2019 study gathered important baseline information about where shellfish populations are located and how young softshell clams are settling onto the flats. It also collected important information from shellfish harvesters themselves about how they've observed a decline in softshell clam abundance and an increase in wild oyster numbers over the last twenty years or so. So, it was our initial goal to continue forward with shellfish population surveys in the summer of 2020. Unfortunately, field surveys were not possible due to COVID-19 restrictions put in place in the spring. Um, so we instead worked to develop an alternative way to collect information on shellfish populations in the Damascata, but from a safe social distance. So, we knew we wanted to collect information on softshell clam abundance and how to get a better understanding of what other types of shellfish species were in the Damascata and where they were located. We also wanted to identify areas in the river that are important for wild shell fisheries to help us determine where to survey this coming summer and summer of 2021, as well as to pinpoint areas that are important to other users in the river. We determined that the best way to get these types of information was to talk with local experts, like clam harvesters and other people who live and work on the river. So, this led to the development of a local knowledge mapping study to help us document information about shellfish populations and use in the river. And when we say local knowledge, we're talking about the observations of people from the community who live and work on the river, and some of these individuals have worked on the Damascata their entire lives and have a rich understanding of how the river has changed and its current status today. So, to document this knowledge, we created a two-part study. The first part is a mapping booklet that we mail out to participants. You can see the cover of it here, pictured on the right. And once they fill out this booklet, we then have a follow-up phone interview to ask more detailed questions about their observations and their understandings of what has changed on the river. Um, this two-part study collects information on the location and abundance of shellfish species and use in the river, but also how shellfish populations and use activities on the river have changed over time.
Okay, and so before we talk any more about the actual setup of the study, we wanted to talk a little more about who our participants are, and, um, kind of what, what type of people were doing the study. And so, we split the study into two main parts, and each of those parts got both the mapping booklet and the follow-up interview. And so, we asked some people in our study about river use activities. And so, those participants included recreational users like kayakers or fishermen, commercial lobster fishermen, aquaculture farmers, harbor masters, harbor and shellfish committee members, and local business owners and employees, and many people fit into multiple categories. We asked other people in the study specifically about shellfish populations in the river. And so, for that part of the study, our participants included commercial and recreational shellfish harvesters, commercial marine worm harvesters, and shellfish committee members. And the vast majority of our participants for the shellfish study were commercial shellfish harvesters. And so, for our study, we had, we expected to have eighteen participants in the use category and sixteen participants in the shellfish category. We're not entirely done with the study yet, but as of now, we've completed fifteen of the use studies and nine of the shellfish studies. Most of our participants have been male, although we've had a couple females in both categories. And our participants have an average age of roughly sixty, and they have about thirty years of experience on the river on average, but some of them have considerably more because they have lived and worked on the river for their entire lives.
Okay, and just to kind of give you an example of what this study looks like. So, this is an example here of the mapping booklet on the right page here. And the map booklet itself is made up of zoomed-in map pages of the river, very similar to the main Atlas roadmap. And participants place stickers, like the shellfish stickers pictured here on the map, to show the location of species and activities in the river. There's also a used version of that as well that we could share with you later if you'd like.
Okay, and so our study had six main, has, has six main steps. So, we started by contacting potential participants, and then mailing this map packet that Sarah just described to the participants who agreed to participate in the study. After they got the map packet and filled it out, we did the follow-up interview. And then, the participants would send the map back to us, and we could enter the data, work on the data analysis, and then work on wrapping up and sharing these results back to the community, including people in the shellfish committee. And I will note that the data entry and data analysis parts both have two steps within them. And so, we have, since we do, since we have the map packet itself and the follow-up interview, we really have two types of data. And the follow-up interview was a chance for people to talk more broadly about changes that they've seen and their observations of shellfish and other activities on the river. And so, it was a way to add additional context to the map packet that the participants filled out. Though likewise, our data analysis had, has two steps as well. So, we plan to be building maps from these physical maps that get mailed back to us. And then, also, we will transcribe and review the follow-up interview to get information and themes about things like changes and other species on the river. And so, next slide. With respect to our progress in the study, we're basically right in the middle right now. We're still mailing out some of the map packets and doing the follow-up interviews after the maps are completed. And we're also getting the maps mailed back to us, and so we're working on the data entry. We're planning to really dive into the data analysis and the wrapping up and sharing these results back in the spring, and we're planning to finish up mailing out the map packets and doing the follow-up interviews in January. And so, our overall goal for the study was to understand the status of shellfish in the Damascata River. And we've had to change our plans a fair amount this year, but we've learned a lot, and we have a number of different ways that we're thinking of summarizing and sharing this information. So, we're planning on making several types of maps. And so, the main ones are maps that show the distribution of individual species, so like oysters, or activities like sailing on the Damascata. And then, also, compound maps that show how different activities and species overlap with one another in space. And we're also planning to make some predictive maps where we can estimate clam populations in the river based on the data that we gathered in the study and other environmental data that we have. And since we have these two different types of data, the interviews and the maps, we're also summarizing changes that people mentioned in the interview, and also summarizing additional activities that we didn't necessarily capture in the maps, but our participants told us were important. That includes things like l wives or duck hunting along the shore. And so, this information will be helpful for us as we plan for fieldwork next summer, because we're really looking forward into digging into this a little more and to continue learning about the status of shellfish in the Damascata River, and also how these other pieces can affect them. And so, we hope to wrap up the mapping part of this project in the spring. And so, we would really like to share these results back with the shellfish committee and with you guys again sometime in the spring, once we've had a little more time to work on our data analysis. And we also want to share this information with anyone else who's interested in the status and the future of shellfish in the Damascata River. As with that, we want to say thank you, primarily to the Broadreach Fund and our partner towns of Damascata, Newcastle, and Bremen. We also want to acknowledge our other funding sources from NOAA and the U.S. National Science Foundation, our study testers and participants, since we wouldn't have any of this if they hadn't taken time to help us, our undergraduate research assistants there, helping with the data entry, our advisors, doctors Heather Leslie and Josh Stoll, you name, and also our other lab members at the University of Maine. And so, with that, do you have any questions for us? And our question for you is, how do you think this information could be useful to the town?
Okay, thank you. Looks like a lot of work that you all have been doing, in spite of all of the problems we've had this past year. It would be commended for finding a way to, to keep it going, and, you know, with the COVID restrictions and what have you, so that's, that's terrific. I'd like, I'd like first to ask the selectmen if they have any questions or comments before we open it up to the, the whole, you know, the other folks that are in the room.
I have a question. My question is, is the packets that you have mailed out, how many packets have you sent out? How many have you had returned in this?
We've sent out, I think about sixteen and eighteen, as I showed on that slide, a couple slides back. And of those, we've gotten maybe fifteen and seven back, and we're still trying to find and finish the interviews and the maps for the other participants.
Okay, thank you.
Just call to follow up with them, to see if they'll send it in?
We've been working on that, it's, it's a busy time of the year.
It is. Okay. Any, I love, I love the, I guess it's the last page with the stickers of the use and the map pages. Kind of with the overlap, this, this little map here.
Oh, yeah.
And it'd almost be fun to be able to use that and make some sort of a poster. Information for folks, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it'll be most commended to the shellfish committee in the spring when everything's all, all finished. Are any of the shellfish committee members participating in the, in your surveys?
Yes, um, we are also doing this survey on the Madomic, and I would say we have more folks in the Bremen Shellfish Committee, but we do have a couple of members, and definitely have had shellfish committee members be great connectors to harvesters as folks to talk to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Robin, on, on the call, I just want to point out, on the call tonight, we've got Dr. Heather Leslie from the Darling Center, and she's also a member of the, the Newcastle-Damascata Shellfish Conservation Committee. And we also have Mick Devon on the line. Mick is a member of the, the Conservation Committee, is a representative from Newcastle.
Okay, I don't know what, oh, okay, here you go.
And then Sarah Gledo is here from Coastal Rivers Conservation Trust as well.
Well, welcome to all of you, do, does anyone else, would anyone else that Matt just named like to make a comment or ask a question of our researchers? I can't see all of you.
I could, I'd like to ask a question, actually, about, you know, how do you think that some of the end products might be used by the shellfish committee or the town writ large?
Yeah, um, that's a great question, I can start, and then if Melissa has anything else to add. I think in the short term, we're thinking it will be really useful as far as informing fieldwork this coming summer, where we get out and actually can do some population surveys on the flats. And for that, we're hoping it'll help us identify areas that are currently important harvesting locations, but also go and look at spots where people have identified declines in clam numbers and kind of explore why that might be, or what's actually going on on the ground. Um, and then, the long-term goal, which we'll see, if, if we can make it happen, it depends a lot on my stats and our skills to make it happen, or coding skills, rather, to make it happen. But, um, the predictive model could be useful for the committee as well, because it'll give them an idea of shellfish populations without having to do these large-scale surveys of the flats, so a much less labor-intensive way to get information about what might be going out on the flats. Um, Melissa, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that's a really good point. I think we're also hoping that if we take a step back, that this study can help people in the town and other people who use the river think about how multiple different uses overlap and help us think about, and maybe address conflicts between different user groups if they do arise. And we're also really hoping that through doing this study and the interviews that we're doing with harvesters and other river users, we're hoping we can get a better sense of what ourselves and other scientists that they can see can do to help questions that need to be asked and answered about the river and try and help address that.
Terrific. Let me ask you a question, will this be able to be replicated every three, five years? With, you know, by a town or by the shellfish committee? Could they take your questionnaires and surveys and what have you, and in the future, and do this? Or would we have to call you all back up again to do it?
Oh, do you want to take that, Melissa, or? I mean, because it looked, it looked like they were both about to start.
Yeah, we would definitely hope it could be replicated fairly easily. We've kind of created the, um, map or layout, I guess, for how it should be done. So, I think so, yes. Do you have anything to add, Sarah?
Um, yeah, just that, this is a different way of doing this than we've seen in a lot of instances. So, yeah, we're definitely interested in this as a method that could be used by other towns. Thinking also about ways. Thinking also about ways to do it that are a bit more immediate. So a lot of times, or some examples have been used in the past where people, when you can gather in large groups in rooms, can project a map up on the wall and ask people in person what they see on the river. And that might be a version of this that can be carried out in the future, that may be less time consuming or expensive. But a really interesting alternative to still collect the same kind of information.
Hey, I, you know, I, I see that there's some, some good and important information to be collected. And if, you know, I kind of view this as kind of a baseline here. And if it can be replicated every few years, you could kind of get a longitudinal evaluation of what's going on in the river.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And I think that would be helpful in the long term. So great beginnings for a long term project. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask one, just out of curiosity.
Okay.
This may be an unfair question, but I hope it's not. You've got limited data, limited, you know, small amounts, small amount of numbers, et cetera. But any study like this, you start out with certain concepts, certain ideas of what you're going to find. And even just early on, you have aha experiences. There's things that you, you notice stuff that you didn't notice, think were there or didn't think about before. And my question is, in terms of bringing us as a town along with you, have you any had any aha experiences in the sense of, oh, this is, this is what's happening rather than what we thought was happening or I don't know if I'm making your question clear enough. I see in that, Sarah's head nodded yes. So this, this is the way of bringing us along in your conversation. If you have any observations like that, that even if you think something, you, you know, something surprised you or whatever, it helps us understand what you're dealing with.
Yeah, I would start off by saying this entire experience has been many aha moments. I feel like we're getting a much richer picture of what's actually going on in the river than we initially had imagined and you know, thinking about different species that we hadn't even included in the initial pass of the study and thinking about, you know, continuing forward and getting more information on that. To try and organize all those ahas, Melissa is developing a list of observations and hypotheses that a lot of our participants have about what's happening. And so that is something that we can definitely be able to share in our final report. So you can kind of see some of those questions and ahas that we've had because there are probably way too many to list right now. It's been a really, really interesting experience and we're learning so much already in such a short period of time. It's amazing.
So let's pick one. The species that surprised you, which you're now looking at.
Yeah, well, I can start, I'll share one and Melissa can share one. I didn't realize that there were that many belons or flat oysters still in the river and we had only been looking at American. So that was a surprise to me.
I guess one that, that one was definitely, it was a big surprise to me as well. And we were interested in learning about soft shell clams, but one interesting thing that's come out of it for me is hearing about the different places where people find soft shell clams. And how that has changed over time. And now people are finding them higher up on the shore and in the harder, rockier mud compared to the softer mud at lower tide levels. That was something we didn't expect and it's been something we've heard quite consistently from the harvesters.
That indicates sea rise.
Sorry, couldn't agree.
Does that indicate sea rise?
I don't know. That's a very good question. Yeah, but, but see how, you know, these observations are bringing up questions just like that, that we can share with other researchers or can explore ourselves. So it's, I think that's what's really exciting about this too, is it's bringing to light different questions that we might be asking.
Okay, so you'll have some of these questions answered in their spring reports after you finish your interviews. Again, with some additional insights. Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, any other questions? Matt?
And Heather has provided some explanations as we go in the chat room, so take a look at those.
I just want to recognize Matt and the leadership he's shown in this project. We, we wouldn't have been able to get started or keep going with, without his leadership. So I just want to thank, thank Matt for helping to bring the team together and keep us going, particularly in this tough time. And as you heard, it's has been really productive and I think we'll have new things to share with you in the spring.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming and presenting it was most informative as it has been earlier. Wish you success in getting the rest of your interviews completed. And look forward to the spring, your spring report out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I guess.
I need to know who asked the question at the end about the last question about the limited data and availability and could they give an example? Who asked that question?
That was hot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. And you are more than welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting. We love to have people. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Heather.
Appreciate your time and hard work.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any citizen comments, general correspondence for this evening? Okay, town manager items.
Okay, let me just go down the list here. I have Stan on the line for the number eight on my agenda. I just want to flag for you that Stan and I are looking at some proposed amendments to the Property Maintenance Code. Want to give you a heads up on that. What we're finding in that in some cases, the, the current code and the current ordinance and the the permit, the code that relates to permits really don't allow us to get as involved as I think we should be as a town. In one case, we've, we've had a building under construction probably since 2016. And it's been in, in the, within the village and pretty much of an eyesore. And it, it falls under the exception of maintenance as far as we, we interpret the code, as far as we interpret the code. We've got a few things that we'll want to propose to the board in down the road. Stan, do you want to just list a couple of the items that you and I talked about? You're not on mute, Stan, but we can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Stan. I think he said all right.
All right, well, specifically what we want to be able to address, and I don't have the list in front of me, but the Oh, are you on, Dan?
Oh, he's holding up the paper.
Oh, okay, yeah, we want to address the permitting process currently if someone's doing major exterior work that falls under the, the routine maintenance, no permit required. And we really want to get a handle on that. So someone could tear off all the siding on their building. And there, there's no permit required. We, we want to be able to, to keep an eye on that. The same with major interior improvements. And that, and then we, we want to be able to add an inspection provision after those, those jobs are completed. Stan, did I kind of summarize that well? Okay, if you could read lips, you could see what Stan's saying. All right.
Zoom.
Yeah. I guess we'll have something kind of that can track along with the historic preservation ordinance. Because I can see where this might be as that moves forward and just, you know.
That's, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. You know, we had, we had an issue with the rising tide changing the color of their building. And the town wouldn't have had any jurisdiction there had it not been a provision or in violation of a provision that was in the, the site plan review approval process. Also, there's a, you know, a building that's just outside of the historic district that, that when they changed ownership, they made it a very bright color. You know, that, as I think we've talked about during the, the historic preservation ordinance discussions, that does not necessarily fall into the, the kind of the scope or the, the purpose of the historic preservation ordinance, even though that might be outside it. So you know, colors of buildings may very well be something that we want to consider as part of some of these changes. But we'll have some drafts for you to look at. It's not the highest priority, but I think it's something that we found we need to address.
Well, and it might be good too, when the historic preservation ordinance is passed, this kind of will work hand in glove. You know, with any improvements or changes or whatever made in the historic district.
Sure.
So, okay, well, thank you.
All right, so I could Stan, you've been so quiet, but I didn't want to hold you up for the whole meeting. Let me give you some, let me give you some updates on capital projects. On the Bristol Road. We, we're done for the year. The contractor did get the section in front of the Baptist Church completed on a temporary basis. We needed to move ahead with a hard surface because we would not have been in compliance with the, the ADA federal regulations. And so for the temporary surfaces putting down, being put down, that will be charged to the project budget that town will be picking up 20%, the state 80% of that. And then the contractor will come down or come back in the, in the spring and finish that up with permanent repairs. The, the only item that I'm hoping we can still cover under the grant monies is the pedestrian light or a pedestrian light at Mile Street on Bristol Road. That's a high priority with the Public Safety and Accessibility Collaborative. And I know other residents have expressed an interest on that. The speed limit at that point is 35 miles an hour. So motorists are going fairly fast. Really quick through that intersection and having some type of pedestrian activated strobe light like we have in two other locations in town, I think, is desirable. That when we got a quote on that, it was $23,000. The state is amenable to including it in the grant funded project. It's just a matter of, of finding out whether we have dollars left when everything else is closed out. Moving on to the next item, the LED light conversion project had the kickoff meeting with the contractor and the folks at Real Term that are managing that project. We had that kickoff meeting on Monday. The latest on a installation date is January 11th. They were hoping to start it before the end of the year. But the, the fixtures have not arrived yet and there's still some details that need to be worked out with CMP. We, we now own the lights, the town now owns on the lights, but the locations listed in about 20 of the lights. We know, we know where they're located based on the, the audit that Real Term did, but the locations don't match what CMP has on their book. So we want to make sure that the lights that are replaced are definitely town owned lights and not privately owned. So that, that process is, is going on right now of reconciling those, those lists. On the sewer lines, I'm going to show you, I'm going to attempt to show you a screen here. And share. Okay, can you all see that? Yeah, yeah, there it is. Yeah. So, oh. This is, this has not been an easy project as you, as you may have gleaned and certainly as, as Daryl has seen firsthand. These, many of these service lines were built decades ago before we had a, a a public or quasi-public sewer system. Again, there are clay pipes that went out to the river up until 1986, when the gravity feed line and the, the other two lines were installed down here by the, the waterfront. So the biggest problem has been finding the location of several of the lines. Now, this line that's in yellow all the way down here, the one that goes horizontally is completed to this point right here where I have my arrow. And the service lines, this isn't exactly where they ended up, but all the ones of Colby, or I'm sorry, west of Colby and Gale, including the one not shown here for Colby and Gale, have been installed. The, the ones here where it's Oliver's Print Shop and, you know, the former Two Fish and Puffin's Nest, those have been located and those will be installed as soon as the contractor starts again, as will the one for the restroom. Where we're having issues are on the one, the, the lure, identifying where the sewer lines are for Damascata Center and the River Grill. And for this line that runs under the John and Jim Gallagher parking lot where we're going to pick up a spur right here. Some other issues are, as it turns out, these lines from Rennie's and the, and Damascata Center are higher than, I'm sorry, they're lower than where the new service line is going. And we need to have the engineers but between Great Salt Sanitation District trying to, or, or not trying, but finding out the exact location of the service lines and right here's doing the engineering work for hooking up those lines with their help, we're going to be able to get back on track. At that point, Chase Construction is going to come back on the site and, and, and finish up the work. There is also a line here going up to Water Street where the, this is the gravity feed line. The sanitary district didn't realize how close that line was to the, the effluent line. So it's, the test pit showed that it was too close to do any work on that line. So some additional engineering needs to be done there as well. So those are, those are the issues kind of in a somewhat of a detail, but not all the, the minutia of where we are today. The plan is for dairy district initiative and an engineering firm at our, with regard to the locations of these, these various lines. And then have the, the contractor come back. It'll likely be after the the holidays after New Year's. And then they'll continue to, to work on this job. And then they'll continue to, to work on this job. They can continue to work through the winter. We just need to be able to give them some specific locations to work with. But that's where that stands. The restroom project is on schedule. They're, the contractor Phi Builders is awaiting the delivery of the riprap. I'm sorry. The the iron pieces that go in the ground that form the, I'm sorry. Yeah. The, in order for the, the concrete contractor to come back and install the concrete, as soon as the, that work is done or those products are delivered, they'll be back. Again, that'll probably be after the first of the year. That, of course, is a good thing with both those contractors. It means that they will not be in the way for the, the holiday shoppers. So that's, that's kind of a relief in, in that respect. Those, those projects do continue.
Matt. As far as the sewer line, just a quick question with Chase. Are they still within the scope of their, the bid or there are going to be some changes?
There are, yeah. There are some change orders. Some of them will be negative change orders and, and because we have like particularly, particularly this, this area up in, along the parking spaces on, on Taco Alley, that actually the, the service line extensions are going to be shorter than what we had originally designed. So we know where those are now, but they will be shorter. And this line up here where I've got the arrow is going to serve both Oliver, you know, the current restaurant that's there where Oliver's Print Shop was and the, the, the building owned by Mercer. So there'll be a savings there, reduction in, 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 in pipe there. Rebar is the word I was looking for. It just popped, popped in my mind. That's rebar is what the, the restroom contractors are waiting for. Once that was not designed until after they got the, the piles in the ground. So that's why we're waiting on that. But again, I believe that's a good thing. They'll be able to work pretty much during January and February on the foundation work. Yeah.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Sure.
When this is all finished, will Wright and Pierce put together a new map like this map that?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Exactly where everything is and how deep and everything, everything is. So we won't have to do this again.
Definitely. So our predecessors down the road and, and actually people, maybe even us, as we try to find where these various lines are, will know exactly where they are.
Perfect.
And they will, they, they will do that. They've already done that for these lines that have already been installed. But as soon as these other lines are designed, they'll do that, that engineering work and we'll have a new version of this.
And they'll work with the sanitary district to make sure that the, all of their lines are appropriately placed on the new map, right?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. Leanna's been, been great. Leanna Libby's been great. She's been on site for most of the project. And she's been, you know, she's been as frustrated as, as any of us with regard to the location of these lines. They, they preceded her time with the, the sanitary district. We have a, a map that goes back to 86 when the, 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 the new service lines were installed, the collector line, the effluent line and the force main line were installed, but those don't have accurate depictions of where all the service lines are. So it's been a frustrating process for the sanitary district as well.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. It'll be nice to get it all cleaned up.
It will be.
I get a question.
Hey.
Mark. As far as that, we just got to make sure that the sanitary district keeps an eye on that line that's got the sag in it. Because once we do with a backpacking lot, you know, they run a camera down there to keep an eye on it, but I think that's something we need to keep in mind that we don't want to be messing with that down the road.
Yeah. You mean that, that'll be, well, that'll be the, that'll line will be abandoned, that gravity line. But I, I think your point is the line will still be there, right?
Yeah, the line will still be there. It's still in use.
Yeah, but it won't be. The line is, is I understand it. Now, you may know more than I do about this, but that's the line that was sagging that, that gravity line, that collector line was the one that's sagging. And this new line that's in yellow. Get my arrow here. This line, see, here's where the, here's where the gravity line went previously. If you follow my arrow, went down here. And then it caught the line and it came up here. Well, it was pumped from the pump station and then it was pumped up to the, the sanitary district. So that is being replaced starting at this point. And
You still have a gravity line coming down through.
Yeah, the grab, the gravity line will be this line here. Yeah.
If you could check on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, see. Okay, I will, but we'll have, what we're going to find is the gravity line is going to be coming up here. And this gravity line will be replaced, but let's check on that. At, at a minimum, I think what we need to be concerned about is a, an unused line that could collapse eventually.
Right.
Agreed. My understanding is as long as they keep an eye on that, they feel they're not going to do anything to it. And it's the one out, it's the one out by the park.
Right. Right. There's three lines at the park right now.
Right. And there's one gravity going to.
One will be abandoned. Yeah.
So if it collapses, then the driveway, the parking area will collapse.
Yeah, that section right there.
Yeah.
There's the force main. There's the sanitary line. Yeah.
Anything?
And here's the, this is the affluent line that dumps into the, the river at the boat launch.
Could they fill it?
There might be a way to fill it. Yeah. There are ways. I, I don't know if that's needed. We'll chat, we'll check with the engineer.
Yeah, if you can let us know though.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So that is all we have on the capital. And then the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve schedule. Did get your permission to close for a full day on New Year's Eve. Since the board was open to that, I, I told the staff, they were delighted, but, but then I, I quizzed them a little more and the preference would be to close Christmas Eve afternoon and New Year's Eve afternoon. I think that's better from a customer service standpoint as well. Hopefully you all agree. I've, I've made the management decision to go ahead and do that. So on the, the next one is the police collective bargaining process. I wondered if this time around, you know, it, it doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but the last time we went through the process was nearly three years ago and it's time to do it again. Daryl has volunteered to, to sit on the negotiation panel with me. And I think, I think it's good that we, that you have a representative on that, that panel is the board of selection. So if that's okay.
As long as nobody else wanted to.
No, that's good.
Take a look at their last collective bargaining agreement. And if you have any questions or concerns or suggestions or recommendations, give them to Daryl.
Yeah. And I did, I did ask the, the union representative to give me a, a draft of what they would like to do. There were three, three areas where they wanted changes, including the, the pay schedule, which I think would have to be changed. But two others in addition to that, I asked them to give me their draft changes so we could review those specifically and then respond. On the next item, I have confirmed with Representative Krafts and Senator Maxman, January 6th to meet with the board. I've, in, in the meantime here, I had a meeting with the Midcoast Managers Group where Stephen Cove, the executive director and Kate DeForre, the assistant director were present. The, those, the, those are officials with MMA. They were present for that meeting and they reviewed the legislative committee's plans for the coming year. Those will be in the, the next issue of the Main Town and City Magazine, the December issue, which will be coming out shortly. You'll be able to see that online, but the essence of that, the preview of that is that the, the legislative committee and MMA staff want to protect the so-called protect the core. And there were some changes in legislation that occurred during the last two years that MMA wants to make sure they stay in there at a time when the state may be reducing their budget, specifically homestead exemption. The homestead exemption went up to $20,000 per eligible resident with the state kicking in a 70% rebate to that. They want to hold the line on that. Hopefully the state will continue to, to refund the, the towns and cities, the 70% of the cost of that exemption. And then even more importantly, in the, the next fiscal year, the revenue sharing will go back up on its way back up to 5% and it'll be going to 3.75%. The, the hope is that, and what the, the towns and cities will be asking for is that we continue with that, that increase back to the way it was, you know, up to 37 and a half years of the 40 years since the revenue sharing passed. So it's 5% of the, the law 40 years, 40 plus years ago was at 5%. Of the state revenues would be shared with communities. You may recall that that was reduced to 2%, a few years ago. And now it's been by the state legislation that passed a couple of years ago, that's been ratcheted back up. And we want that to continue. So that's, that's going to be a, a key message for legislators. And Phil, if you have some ideas, in the meantime, if, if we haven't, if you haven't received the, the Main Town and City issue, I'll send that out to you digitally before the next meeting. So you can see what the, the key issues are for MMA. And then if you have any other issues that you'd like to bring up, give that some thought before the January 6th meeting. Moving on, the, and oh, I might also mention, I, you know, we did, we did have a meeting of the Service Center Coalition via Zoom. And they have, they're echoing what MMA is saying, protect the core. That's what their lobbyist is going to be working on as well. The trans, transfer station annual meeting is coming up December 29th. It'll be in Nobleboro. I'll attend that on behalf of the town. And you're all welcome to attend as, as well. You know, we don't have a vote on that, that governing board because we're not a member, just Jefferson and Nobleboro are, but certainly why, we want to hear and comment on the discussion regarding the, the budget for the coming year.
If you haven't been to one, they're very interesting. I wish I could go, but we have plans. So I'll have to, Matt, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll be in for the first year and, and three years. So we won't be going back to Denver. So I'll be here.
Okay.
Information Bureau update. I've, I've got some, some good news. It's preliminary news on that front. The, the, the state did finally get together, the people that have to make these decisions had, finally got together and decided that they could in fact sell the ground on which the Information Bureau is located to the town. That's, that's great news for the chamber and the Information Bureau. Don't know what the price is going to be. Hopefully it'll be a reasonable price. And that, that whatever it is can be incorporated in the fundraising that the chamber is doing or will be doing to up the building. But at least we know, we know now the willingness, there is a willingness to, to transfer that property to the town. The main condition from MDOT was that we, we have the entrance on Main Street and the exit on Vine Street so that we don't have people either backing out onto Main Street or exiting onto Main Street. So directly from the, the Information Bureau, but it's, it's one step into getting that, getting the future of that building secured. It's such a, in my view, it's such a prominent feature. A key historical facility in, in, in our downtown area. It'll be really cool to have that restored and expanded for the chambers.
Absolutely.
That's really neat. And then don't believe I sent this out to everyone and I'll send it out after the meeting. I could, I could share it now, but we, we do have reports that we get from Central Main Power on the amount of energy, electrical energy that is credited to our account. We have a surplus in that account. November is the first month where we're using more than generating, but we're, we still have a tremendous store of energy accumulated in the bank. So it's, it's more than covering our electrical needs for town facilities. And when the restroom finally comes online, that'll be included as well. And I've, I've talked with them about putting the energy for the, the streetlights, the traffic lights, not the streetlights, the traffic lights on that account. And they have, they have done that as well. So we've got that covered. We cannot do streetlights at this point, just as a reminder, because they are not metered. But we were able, you might recall, we were, we were able to get a reduced supply rate from Constellation Energy for the, the energy used, even the reduced amount of energy, the significantly reduced amount of energy when we have the LED lights onboard. And then I already covered the, the property maintenance code item. So just any other questions for me? Cover those under discussion items as well, of course.
All right. Official act, my action items. I'm sorry. Cemetery deed and perpetual care agreements with Ronald W. and Carolyn E. West. I'll make a motion that we approve the cemetery deed and perpetual care agreement with Ronald W. and Carolyn E. West. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Okay. Matt, do we just come up and sign this when we can? How do we do that? Do that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull that up for you right now. It had a typo in it, so I didn't send it out earlier. It was, it just, the where, whereas was spelled wrong. So I sent that back to Cheryl and I just find it on here. Well, maybe if you could move on to the, the next one while I look at this one.
Okay. The one thing that I see though, on the, I do have a copy. So it might be an early one. It says dated, dated the second of December. That's not where signing is. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, it had to do with the transfer deed. It was corrective. I don't think I sent you that one. Did I?
No. So we would just come up and sign it?
Well, what I'm going to, I'm not sure how we do the Well, what I'm going to, I'm not sure how we do the notary, but Josh suggested this at the last meeting. I'll have all the payroll warrants and all the accounts payable warrants. And then there was one other item, the deed that you signed last time. I was just going to visit each of you and with a packet after this meeting, probably next week. What I have to ask permission for is how we handle the notary part of those, whether they would just, the notaries here in the office would just trust me. The signatures I'm getting are, in fact, your signatures, so.
Either that, then you coming to visit us, we could all just stop in, pick a day to stop.
I mean, that might be the only thing we could do.
On the same day, because so you'll have the same person in the office to be the notary.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Maybe if that's agreeable to all of you, I'll just, we'll poll you on what day is convenient, and then I'll make sure that the same notary is available for that.
Yeah, I think that would be easier than you don't, aren't running around all over town and trying to figure out how it works.
Okay. Got the screen up. Here's the first one. So it's a corrective deed, and the other one is going to be very similar to this, rather than 204 and 207, I think it was supposed to be 205 and 207. Yeah, and then the other one was was 206, and it was supposed to be 207. So that's, those are the changes, and I'm not sure how this came about, but my hunch is that Patty Whitten was reviewing the detail, and she stays right on top of that and saw that the deed numbers were incorrect. So we need to correct the deeds on the transfer of ownership on both of those items.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the cemetery deeds as presented.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
We'll end up with 206 and 205 being the two numbers in addition to 204. All right.
And we have a planning board alternate member resignation. I'll make a motion that we accept Beth Prentice's resignation from the planning board as an alternate member.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Now, Matt, do we need to appoint a new alternate?
Yes.
Not tonight? Can we?
No, and that's the reason I put it on, the main reason I put it on the agenda is just to send out a verbal call, and maybe Evan can put that in his article on this meeting, about this meeting, that there is a vacancy in the alternate position on the planning board. So anyone that's interested can contact me.
Hey. All right. Selectments, Discussion Items, and what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go around the room as I see you on my Zoom screen. So Daryl, we'll start with you this time.
No, I just wanted to say, everybody stay warm, and it's getting colder. And I guess a quick question from Matt, or a comment, anyway, just keep us up to date if any, you know, it's getting colder, and any general assistance, you know, how that's keeping up and stuff, you know. Pretty well with it, but we're seeing some colder weather, so let us know if you see an uptick in it and go from there. But everybody stay warm.
Okay. Josh?
I don't have too much tonight. Just want to say happy holidays. Glad to see Lou's back in action full bore, and just have a safe and festive holiday season.
All right. Thank you, Lou. So glad.
I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I wish to express my extreme appreciation to Matt, his staff, the Police Department, the Fire Department, all our various boards and board members for the wonderful job they have done this year in extreme situations. If I could give them an award, I would. Instead, all I can do is give them five stars.
I think we would all agree with that. So very well said. Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, absolutely. Lou set it off. You know, you can't add more to that. That's just, that's great. And I agree totally. And I just wanted to say thank you for Matt, for getting some lights out there on our walkway at the town office, which is great. Everybody stay safe.
Now, we just have to have some meetings here, so that people can take advantage.
It's dark so early. They're still coming to do business in the town office.
That's right. They are.
It's a lot safer, especially once we get icy conditions. So, okay, I will echo everyone's comments about happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Celebrate safely if you go out. I will also, we're planning a big snow event. I love the weathermen. We're having a snow event. It's going to snow tomorrow. Please, if you can, stay off the roads and let the plows do their jobs. It'll be, you know, it's safer for them, safer for you, and they can do their job a lot more quickly. So happy holidays to everyone, and we will see you in the new year.
Well said, everybody.
No?
Thank you.
For the good of the order.
Robin, just if I could mention quickly with regard to the snow predictions tomorrow, everyone, all three of our employees here, Cheryl, Heather, and Becky, have their laptops, so tomorrow will be a good chance for them to see how they work from home. They got all set up today, and I told them not to come into the office because of the early snow we're going to have.
Yeah, that's wise. That's wise. You know, it's just not worth it. Not worth it. Okay. Do I hear a motion too? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
See you next year.
Thank you. Thank you.